Welcome to this forum for candidates for Ward Seven of the Corvallis City Council Race. This online program is co-hosted by the Lynn Benton Branch of the NAACP and the League of Women Voters of Corvallis, both organizations that I am proud to be a member of. The Lynn Benton Branch of the NAACP was formed in 1971 and is a nonpartisan organization that works to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights of all persons and to eliminate race-based discrimination. The League of Women Voters is also a nonpartisan advocacy and education organization working to defend our democracy and engage our community on the issues that matter most to them. My name is Jessica McDonald and I am active in the League of Women Voters of Corvallis, currently serving as the Chair of the Voter Education Committee. I am joined by our co-moderator this evening, my friend and community leader, Angel Harris. Angel, I'll pass it over to you.
Hello, my name's Angel Harris. I am the past president of our Lynne Benton NAACP. I'm also a nurse here in the community and I have lived here in Corvallis for 29 years and am a Ward Seven resident.
Nicole. Well, welcome to Paul Schaefer, Roy Rubin, and Andrea Bybee to this candidate forum. To open the discussion, we are going to ask you to take two minutes to introduce yourselves to the voters watching this recording and share why you were running for city council. And we will start with Andrea.
All right, thank you. My name is Andrea Bybee. She/her pronouns. I've lived in Corvallis for about eight years. I have three kids. My oldest just, he graduated from OSU in 2023. My other two are in middle school here. I've worked in civil rights ever since I graduated from law school at U of O in 2013. And I got interested in running for city council when I attended my first council meeting last year when the genocide in Gaza began. I was surprised by the lack of action being taken by the council members with an issue that I thought would be easy to condemn apartheid and genocide. And the more committee meetings or council meetings I attended, I wasn't just speaking there on my behalf, but I was able to hear all the public comments and on a variety of issues. And it made me really interested in like how decisions are made when people are bringing forth the issues that they want action on in the city. So I spoke with some folks about running on city council this round after that experience and no one else was taking the bait. So I ended up doing it. I never intended to, but I know that, you know, this, I, it just felt like there needed to be, people shouldn't be running unopposed right now, that there need to be more options, more choices. And I feel like it just, we need some brave leadership and I'm here for that. I'm always calling out the elephant in the room and bringing up issues in my, in my professional roles. And so I thought it would just be an important civic duty for me to do here. And I'm learning a lot through this process. It's been great.
Thank you, Andrea. Now on to Paul.
Hey, thank you. Good evening. My name's Paul Schaefer. I'm the, one of the candidates running for Ward Seven Council. I also happen to be the incumbent. Let me start by thanking the NAACP and the League for organizing and hosting this forum. I think it's an important thing for the community. Very brief background, I grew up on East Coast, went to college at Michigan State and University of Virginia, trained as a scientist in environmental chemistry and hydrology. And that brought me to Corvallis in 1984 with my wife and a couple of kids. My kids grew up here. They're graduates, graduates of Corvallis schools and OSU. Started as a contractor for the US EPA lab in Corvallis. Spent the last 12 years of my career before retirement, working for the state of Oregon, specifically Oregon Department of Energy related, things related to the Hanford site in Washington, nuclear site in Washington. Why am I running? When I was working and raising kids and work, lots of work, travel, I didn't pay much attention to local government. It seemed like it ran itself and everything went just fine and didn't need it. But once I retired, I began to realize there's a lot of people do a lot of hard work to make local government run. And so this kind of became an opportunity for me to give back to the community. When they, when my predecessor had to resign from council for some health reasons in 2019, I ran, I won that election. I've been reelected twice since then. Right now, part of the reason I want to keep running, I think there's a lot of big things going on in Corvallis government, many which we'll touch on in a little bit, strategic planning, infrastructure, new facilities and whether we build them, how to pay for them, lots of big unfinished business. And I want to be able to apply what I've been learning and doing and discussing the last couple of years to helping make those important decisions. So I'm, I'm running again for another term to, to help us get there on some of this stuff. So with that, I'll stop and turn it over to, back to you, Jessica.
Thank you, Paul. And now on to you, Roy.
Hi, my name is Roy Rubin. I've lived in Corvallis for three years now. I am going into OSU. I've been in my undergraduate program for the last three, last four years. And I'm going into my graduate program in ecological engineering this next year with a focus on city planning. I chose city planning because I have had extensive experience as a pedestrian throughout my life, including in Corvallis. I've been hit by a car twice and found that there were a lot of problems that I thought needed to be fixed. I have been working with Sunrise Corvallis for about three years now, which is how I got the motivation and actual action and help to run, along with my other five people running with me. We have been trying to do things through city council for as long as I've been a member and I found it difficult and largely ineffective. And so I decided that it was very important for us to try, rather than getting other people elected, to get ourselves elected because we think that, I think that it's, I will be a good counselor and that I will take the action that I think is needed by, needed for our city. Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. Now on to Angel for our pre-prepared questions.
All right. And again, we want to thank you all three of you so much for being here. This is very important to allow everyone to kind of hear from each of you and your, your goals and your plans if you are to win this. So thank you so much again for being here. And so we have seven questions for you. We're going to rotate each round of questions as to who starts first. For our first question, you have a maximum of two minutes to answer each question around there. And for the first question, we're going to start with Paul, then we'll go to Roy and then Andrea, okay? So the question is, what do you see as the biggest issues facing the city in the next five years? And then how do you propose to tackle those issues? Paul, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you. I'm keeping a short list of issues. There's a whole, but I need to focus down. So I will start with housing, market rate and affordable and frankly, supportive housing for the homeless. There's, there's a problem going back a long time in Corvallis with housing. And I think the city and its agencies have finally turned a corner on this through annexations, changes in zoning with things like mixed-use zoning and subsidies for affordable housing. I think at this point, we sort of go with what we're doing and give it time to her. It's been a pet peeve of mine since I worked here or since I got on city council. Reality is our infrastructure is gradually deteriorating. Council has had a lot of work sessions with Public Works the last year or so to talk about this. And there's really no alternative. You either pay to make things work. So when you turn the tap, the water comes on. When you flush the toilet, the water goes away. Or you don't fix it and it deteriorates. And so the unfortunate reality is we're looking at fee increases to, to pay to bring our system back. Climate is changing. The city is not going to solve it at a large scale, but we can certainly do our part. The C approach so far has been pretty much voluntary. Inclusion in things like home energy scores and other things, no food waste. It's not working. And so I think the approach that we need to look at, but don't have five votes on city council at the moment, is to either go with incentives or some requirements for, for stronger action. The final thing I'll just mention quickly is, is process. Council has been a fairly passive body for several years. Since I've been on council, we need to start being more proactive and I think we're getting there. We need to be more strategic. We, we have not been, and I think we need to do a better job of setting goals and priorities. And as in reference again to climate and DEI, I think we need to look at every major decision we make through those lenses to make sure we're not missing things or making bad decisions and bad assumptions. So I'll stop there.
All right, thank you, Paul. Roy, same question to you.
Yeah, I also would echo a lot of the same issues that Paul has. I think one of the biggest issues we have is houselessness and how the city is not doing a lot of long-term solutions. I think it's incredibly important that we actually work five, 10 years out on how we are helping our houseless community rather than trying to just move them out of the way, which is what the city has mostly been doing at this point. I would like to start building more homes for them, which is always what people say. But the first step is, in less than a five-year period, is to stop camps sweeps and issues along that line. Another big thing is climate. Would like to start building climate resilience, connecting our communities so that people know where to go during climate emergencies, creating heating and cooling shelters so that we can help the people that are most directly impacted. The city also spends a lot of money on building its road infrastructures. I believe the number is about 8% just on building and maintaining its roads. And I think it would be incredibly beneficial if we moved some of that money to creating bike infrastructure rather than car infrastructure because it would go a lot further for bike infrastructure and be able to move more people. As I have gone through this campaign, I've noticed more and more of the problems with the way our city is run, largely around city transparency. I have heard a lot of stories about how little, how much power is being taken away from our current city counselors and especially over the last few years. And I think it's incredibly important for city counselors to have city counselors that are willing to take that power back. Because right now, our elected officials don't seem to be acting as elected officials in many circumstances. I think I will end it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. And Andrea, same question to you.
Well, as I mentioned, I'm coming at this from, you know, I was brought into this or this idea from, through a specific lens of, you know, the rule of law, international law and Palestine specifically. But I think it can be easy, easy to think like, especially in Ward Seven, we kind of live in this idyllic little bubble and that like issues that are affecting others might not trickle down to affect us. But yeah, echoing some of what they said, the issues I think we'll be facing in the next five years are the same that are growing around the country and the world. We have climate change at a record pace. And we need to start, like I was saying, like truly prioritizing action that centers like the health and the planet and not profits and also not kind of deferring that decision-making. And on that same line, the cost of living here in Corvallis is, and everywhere is accelerating in an unsustainable way. It just seems like the cost of everything is increasing. I saw $11 dozen, like dozen eggs for $11 at the store the other day. And I just, that's not sustainable and we need community and we need to build community around being resilient for whatever comes our way. But we at least know what is happening right now, which is cost of living and climate change going hand in hand. And this is another piece that we asked of city council was around divesting from apartheid and war and start investing more in our community here. Currently, Corvallis residents spend, send approximately $600,000 a year to fund Israel's military and their free healthcare and their free universities. And we don't, we're not keeping that money here because we're not divesting nationally. But locally, a lot of our PERS dollars, our accounts that OSU retirement funds are investing in weapons that are being used in this genocide, knowing that OSU is like suspended student groups for demanding that they divest from apartheid. I just think leadership is one of the big issues also facing us for the next five years. The type of leadership we're going to utilize to tackle these really big issues. Currently, we're, it's not a good start for confronting the issues that we're facing and it's only going to increase. So I would say we need to stop also, stop trying to make corporations and people supporting apartheid and war comfortable. And we need to become a community that stands up for justice, no matter the issue, environmental justice, housing justice, reproductive justice, disability justice, et cetera.
Thank you, Andrea. And Jessica, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you. And for this question, we'll start with Roy and then go to Andrea and then back to Paul. All right. So as city councillor, how will you work to ensure that meaningful engagement and input from the public is represented, both in your deliberations and your decisions as a city councillor? And again, we'll start with Roy on this question.
Hi, um, so my campaign, its entire purpose, other than to get elected, is to build our capability as a community. We are working to build connections between all of our community members as well as build groups that are able to work together throughout the community. And that is the whole purpose of what we're doing. We're running this group of six people and six separate groups. And we are using that as an opportunity of connecting all of Corvallis and I, if the city isn't doing that by itself already, then I don't think the city is being effective. And I think that electing people who are actively doing that already and in their campaigns, like through my work with Sunrise or through my work with other groups like Stop the Sweeps, who are actively trying to build community is incredibly important. And I would like to bring that into city council. I don't think city council is currently doing a great job of considering all of the public needs. I heard from one of the city councillors a few days ago that they had tried to get a bathroom in Central Park for several years and that it ended up not working out because the city manager wasn't willing to actually do that, even though they had directed him to. And I think if we have city councillors that are willing to actually make things happen and are all on one mind for what they want the city to look like, then we can actually get things done. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. And Andrea, the same question on public engagement.
Yeah, I would definitely engage with community comment portion of the city council meetings in a, in a more meaningful way than I witnessed. I felt pretty dismissed and dismayed by the response to community comments and the seeming lack of curiosity being shown by the council members at the meetings I attended. Like I said, for a wide array of issues, listening to other people speak, I was so curious. I had so many questions that I wanted, you know, engagement and discussion. But I am, in my work life, I facilitate a lot of meetings and move a lot of issues along. I'm about, like, I love, I'm action-oriented, problem-solving, like keeping and keeping partners involved in the solutions to the problems that they are facing and bringing to us. I only have my experience to draw on, but one of the things we did as a community to speak to council around Palestine was we provided as subject matter experts, the council with a draft resolution, hoping to get that started. And the response was lackluster, but I think it was a good example of what I would, I would like to get from the public would be like, here, this is what we are bringing from our lens and experience being impacted by this issue. And, and starting to, you know, like use them as subject matter, use people as subject matter experts whenever possible. I think nothing about us without us is an important piece of decision-making and keeping folks that are most impacted by an issue involved in resolving that issue. And then just loop back, close the loop, let folks know what you're doing with the issues that they bring to you and keep revisiting that and checking in with like, hey, it's been a year since we implemented this plan. How's it going? Give us feedback.
Thank you, Andrea. And now I will close the question out with Paul.
Hey, I'll start with a little bit different tack about just generally engaging the public. It's a very difficult thing to do with the decline of, of local journalism and reporting. It's hard to reach out and get people aware. We post things on the city website. We post things on social media. I write a newsletter about once a month to people in the ward. And still you get an awful lot of people who are unaware of what is going on with the city. And it's, it's a challenge. There's, there's a whole lot of information and a whole lot of it is noise, which makes it hard to concentrate. There is also, as I think Roy noticed, something of a lack of trust in the city. I will, I will concede that a lot of what happens is perceived as opaque. We made a change in advisory board structure that coincided unfortunately with COVID and it didn't go very well. It's time to revisit that because that's, that's a sore spot for a lot of people about how the public engages in the process. I want to just respond to the comments about community comments. Council as a rule does not involve, engage in discussion at that time. If individual councillors want to follow up or if there's an item that we feel it's appropriate to bring back to council discussion, we do that. But to cite the specific issue of, of Israel and Palestine, there was a lot of frustration on both sides that the city would not take a position for Israel or for Palestine. There was really never a chance that the city was going to do that. My personal opinion is there's enough war crime and atrocities on both sides that anything that, that speaks to one side of the issue is, is a bad idea. What we did do as a city was write what was a really pretty blah resolution. Okay, speaking to local aspects of, let's encourage good behavior locally. Let's avoid the name-calling and the overt acts against individuals. So I, I'm out of time.
Great, thank you. And now over to Angel.
All right. All right, we're going to start with Andrea on this next question. I go to Paul and then Roy. So the city has a large urban growth boundary. What are your plans to service this land for the future, including infrastructure like sewer, water, and transportation? And then secondly, do you support a new memorandum of understanding or MOU with the county in relation to the use and development within the urban growth boundary? Did you get all that?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Andrea, we'll start with you.
Well, I guess the second half, I, I am admittedly not super privy to the current MOU with the county as it relates to urban growth boundaries and development. But revisiting MOUs is likely always a good thing to do on a regular basis and keeping those fresh and up to date, especially with evolving needs and priorities of, of the community, such as the environment. And, you know, as we hopefully start to require more assessment, environmental impacts and all of that, like that. We're revisiting MOUs to demand that in our, in how we work together with whomever we're working with. So I, I think, I, I think I do always support fresh, a fresh look at whatever we're doing that is, is, that we're relying on. And in terms of the urban growth boundary, like I think it's, like I said in the last response, I would, I hopefully we would rely on subject matter experts to make those decisions around infrastructure. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of expanding more single-family homes or residential, limited to residential areas that just create more kind of commuter clusters. And I would say diversifying like neighborhoods to have a mixed use would just minimize our reliance on having to drive to get needs met. If we're going to be creating suburbs basically or expanding that, that commute, then it would be critical to develop options alongside it that do not have us relying solely on fossil fuels to support those communities and their access to services. And like Paul was saying about the infrastructure already kind of being challenged, like how can we maximize and, and focus on what we, the existing, make existing improvements to what we have already? And then also just kind of make our community less dependent on going to a few streets to get all of our needs met and everyone having to drive in from wherever they are. I just don't think that's a sustainable way to do, to do a city. So I don't have a lot of specifics on sewer pipes and water lines, but it's just kind of the approach that I think.
All right, thank you so much. And we'll go to you next, Paul.
Okay, okay. As far as UGBs, the whole notion of those is to make sure that in the land around the cities, there's adequate area for growth, whether that be residential or industrial land uses or other things. And I think we're in pretty good shape on that with the Corvallis UGB. System's actually working fairly well. We've done over the last three or four years, several annexations from a few acres to, in one case, more than 100 acres to, that, that will come into development in the near future. I will say that I'm a pretty firm no on preemptively extending infrastructure to promote growth for several reasons. First of all, the city doesn't have the money. We can't take care of what we have. Second, the city shouldn't be deciding what build is built where outside the city limits. This is private land and, and that's not our job. What, the way the system works, developers, when they develop land, they are responsible for building the infrastructure to city standards through system development charges. That works pretty well. We do WAVE SDCs for affordable housing as a, as a policy. As far as a new MOU with the county, I'm not sure what it would look like. I'm pretty skeptical that it's going to happen because the county kind of marches to its own drummer on a lot of things the last few years that don't quite align with what the city was, would like. You know, I will say that city leadership meets regularly with our counterparts from the county to talk about all manner of issues. And so if there's something that should evolve into an MOU, I suspect it will come up at some point and, and be pursued then. But for now, I, I don't think this is something that's imminent.
All right, thank you, Paul. And then Roy? All right. Thank you, Paul. And then, and Roy.
I, I'm not super up to date on the MOU issue. Um, I have some information, but I do think it is important to be careful how, how our city expands and that we need to really be planning for what infrastructure we want now. So that in 10 years, when we do expand, that we have public, public transit and bike paths that are leading to these new communities. Um, it's also important that we ma- make sure we are looking at what we want for our futures in the aspect of things like greenhouse, um, greenhouse gas emissions from fossil fuels. So making sure we're planning out what type of infrastructure is going to be in these new areas. Um, I know that's a very complicated issue. But it's also something that I, I think the city should put a lot of effort into keeping track of. I would like to echo both Paul and Andrea. I think they both had a lot of great points, um, about making sure that we are focusing on the city that we want to have. Um, making sure we have dense and mixed use walkable sections of the city. So that there's all different types of housing for everyone. From apartments to single family homes, so that there is a type of housing for every situation. Um, including cluster housing and making sure that we are making our zoning laws so that businesses and restaurants and other things are allowed to be within residential neighborhoods. So that people don't have to drive all the way across town in order to access resources. Making so people can walk to destinations rather than drive would make a huge, would be a huge benefit in lowering our city's traffic as well as, um, promoting our city and promoting our, and promoting this, the health of our city infrastructure.
Thank you, Roy. And Jessica, I'll turn it back over to you. One next question.
Thank you. For this question, we will go in the order of starting with Paul and then to Roy and then to Andrea. So the question is, are there specific actions you would take if elected or reelected to advance racial equity within our community? I'll start with Paul.
And I'll start by being a bit cynical, perhaps snarky. Um, the reality is we have a major political party in this country that actively promotes and thrives on bigotry and divisiveness. And I suppose the single biggest thing many of us could do would be to vote against people from that party. As a way of saying what they promote, what they do, what they believe is not acceptable. Whether that's about race, whether that's about national origin, whether it's about religion, whether it's about gender equity. Um, they cover the gamut, unfortunately. As a, as a, as an individual and as a council, I think we all work hard to be aware. Uh, let's face it, I'm a middle class white dude. Uh, there's a lot of baggage in my background. And I try to be aware of that. I try to be aware of that in, in the decisions I make and in the things I say. I think the city, um, likewise tries to be very conscientious as far as specific actions. Um, there's not, I, I guess I will say there's we're limited in what we can do. Um, you know, somebody raised the issue of divestiture. And the city, to my knowledge, has already divested itself of, um, businesses that practice apartheid, that practice racial things that are military industrial. Um, there are better places to put our money. And frankly, we haven't talked about that with the budget or with anything for a while. It's a good time to revisit that. There's a question later on about, um, being aware, the city funded a position or part of a position several years ago when we said, believe the state was not doing a good job of, um, tracking and reporting bias. And, um, so we felt that it was important to do that at the local level and, um, time's up. Sorry. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Paul. And same question to you, Andrea.
To me or to Roy? I wasn't. I can go, but I didn't want to throw off the cycle.
Thank you so much for pointing that out. Yes, it is Roy. Thank you.
I think we need to make a point of making sure that it's not being put onto our that it's everyone's responsibility to stand up to racism and actively be involved in creating solutions for it and not just the people who are actively being affected. Uh, we need to do things like the bias response plan, uh, make sure that actually happens. Um, as well as creating innovative solutions that for our policing system that not only will, that can reduce bright, reduce the cost to the city, but also reduce the bad outcomes, which the city has been having to, with all, which the whole community has been having to deal with. And we need to make sure the city is acknowledging that the unhoused community is uh, made up disproportionately of people of color. And we need to be heavily focusing on solutions for the houseless, um, community to get them into situations where they can get off the street and, yeah. Yeah, um, I'm gonna stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Now on to you, Andrea.
Thank you. Um, uh, yeah, like, like I said, this is racism, um, is kind of why I'm here. The racism I saw involved in the council's different treatment towards violence against black and brown bodies in Palestine versus the urgency with which the council passed resolution in support of, uh, the white bodies in Ukraine was pretty stark. And it sadly isn't that shocking since we do live in a racist society. Um, and I think white supremacy is so deeply ingrained in our bureaucracy and our governments and our politics that even when it's so counter, everyone, uh, everyone should be aware how counter justice it is, it's what keeps people comfortable. The, the people that are, we are protecting and making sure are always comfortable at the sake of everyone else that is left to deal with the brunt of other people's lack of growth or stepping aside or, uh, educating themselves. And so I would hope that on a local level, the nine people we elect to council would be representing the best in us and be actively dismantling those systems that have led to this, uh, violence and violence inside of us and violence as a country and, you know, Paul speaking about a party who is demeaning others. I'm not sure which party even at this point. It is so, so problematic, the level of, um, rhetoric that is being spewed by like supposed leaders and not condemned and not called out by, um, by those who are currently in, it's very, very disappointing. Um, but so in my professional roles, I've always worked in civil rights, uh, office. Either I do training, I create policy, I ta- handle cases that are all around discrimination of all types. Um, and in all of those roles, I've always centered and spoken up about racism. I'm always, I will always call it out. Um, and we should require that of our dis- of our decision makers as well and that, that they're all like skilled up in equity and racial justice and are receiving adequate training, demonstrable application of that training, um, like Paul was saying, like, oh, maybe we should revisit some of these through that, through a lens of racial justice or through a lens of, um, that a hundred percent, I think all of our investments, all of our decision making needs to be put through an equity lens.
Thank you all. And I'll turn it back to Angel.
All right. Take a deep breath. Good job. All right. So our next question, we'll have, uh, Roy, uh, go first and Andrea, then Paul. Um, council events have called attention to the relationship between the council and the city manager and staff leadership and the city staff and management in need of change. And we'll start with you, Roy.
Throughout this whole campaign, I, I've slowly began to learn more and more about the interaction between city counselors and staff, especially with the city manager, Mark Shepherd. And I've begun to realize how fraught it is. Um, I've talked with city counselors and staff and have heard that the council is not using its authority that needs to, to do what actually needs to get done. Um, the council has for many reasons, limited access to lawyers, um, if the counselor, I've heard that counselors don't know how to contact the lawyers, um, at least some of them. And if they needed to contact them in, for a staffing issue, which I've heard is a problem that they don't have a way of doing that. Without having to go through pe- the people that they might have to be talking, that they might be have a, be having an issue with. I would like to actually hold Mark Shepherd accountable for ignoring us as elected officials. Um, like I mentioned earlier, they're the best example of how I have Central Park and how for three years, Mark Shepherd ignored and ignored city counselors' urges to do so. And there's still no bathrooms in Central Park. So I think we need to find ways of actually holding him accountable while also taking power back for our city counselors because um, and yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Um, Andrea, what are your thoughts?
Um, I think it's, I think mostly it's just important that democratically elected representatives are able to actually make decisions in the roles they were elected for. Um, and that decision making power isn't allocated to one non-elected employee. Um, and I'm not sure if it is that stark at this point, but, um, in theory, it would be more representative of the community to allow for those elected officials, um, to be the ones that have the final say on decision making, like Roy was referencing that Central Park issue. It kind of undermines the democratic, uh, vibe of this whole process if we then just let someone else, um, ultimately decide who was not elected. Um, and hopefully, you know, if there are issues, I know in some of the council meetings that I attended, they were, they were talking about some issues that were coming up with council member and the city manager and I would hope there were, um, you know, any conflicts that arise or negotiate or like mediated in good faith and people are trying to like, that there's a conflict resolution pathway and that there is clarity of roles and clarity of authority. Um, to, to hopefully minimize those conflicts, but when they do arise, that we're not spending a lot of money trying to res- externalize our conflicts to a lawsuit or whatever, but we're, we're able to, um, more effectively utilize our time and our resources to engage in good faith negotiation or mitigation or whatever that looks like. Um, that's all.
Thank you, Andrea. And, and Paul.
Yeah, I, I have an insider's perspective on all of this, so, um, I will be the first to say there are some serious issues between council. And I will focus on the city manager. Staff in general is not the problem. Uh, I have a lot of respect for the professionalism and for the people who are our senior staff. There are counselors who, um, have serious issues with the city manager. I'm not going to pretend that's not the case. I'm not quite sure where I am. In the next four days, I'll be filling out my performance evaluation for the city manager. And it's going to take some thought. I will probably spend most of an airplane ride tomorrow working on it, to be perfectly honest. I have concerns with some of the things Mark says or does or doesn't do. He and I meet twice a month, one-on-one, and we talk pretty honestly. Some counselors choose not to meet with him individually. That's their call. You know, I, I will say, I think over the past several years, council has sort of abdicated some, perhaps much of its authority. Um, we don't set goals and priorities. We take what comes to us from, from staff. We don't, um, we're, we're not aggressive in taking positions. We could do a better job and that's one of the things I'm, I'm trying to push at in several ways. Um, I'm not going to take a position publicly right now about the city manager. Um, in early April, I will actually, as council president, be leading the executive session where staff talks about and does Mark's performance review. And I don't want to say anything that might inadvertently steer that discussion at all. Um, that's not a cheap out. It's a, it's a reality that I think I have a, a responsibility there, but I will have my own opinions. I will have put them in writing by, I think it's next Wednesday that we're supposed to have these things back in. And there will be some very lively discussion as part of the performance review process. I don't know how it's going to end. And I will note, different counselors have different issues. So the Central Park bathroom is a big deal for some people. It's, it's a, it's a non-issue for others. There are different things, different people get excited about or, or are annoyed with. And so it's a, it's a mixed bag. Um, but I think there's a symptom there that there's some frustration. And this happens when you have a manager for so many years, you know, you start clashing on things. It's not all sweetness and light. So I'll stop there.
Right. Thank you, Paul. Um, and Jessica, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And for this order, we'll go, start with Andrea, move to Paul and then to Roy. So this question is, the city is in the process of planning and designs for a new civic campus on Madison Avenue. At this point in time, you know, what are your thoughts on the civic campus to replace the existing city hall? Would you support its development, given what you know now? We'll start with Andrea.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I don't know a ton about the civic camp, this, um, but I did look around a little and I had heard it come up in a couple, um, meetings that I've been in and just these endorsement meetings, et cetera. Um, and I guess, you know, kind of like everything else, it'd be around. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say yes or no. I support its development with such limited information, but hope- hopefully we would have a team of experts who have put this through an equity analysis, a budget analysis and environmental impact analysis to ensure that you know, we're doing this in the best, most meaningful way if we are expanding. Um, and if it is a civic campus, then hopefully, um, I would love to see, I saw that it was like a $49 million budget for this and that is pretty, um, huge, large. And so if that was, if we were using that, if we're going with that number, just really, uh, kind of taking a step back and seeing what, how much could we do with that? How much can we incorporate into this? At the very least, hopefully a bathroom in Central Park, right? Like, can we start to use this for, if we're going to make it like a community campus, a civic campus, and hopefully it would serve not just for offices, um, but it would actually meet, uh, additional needs of the community. I also don't think it's a great that we, you know, let things lag to a point. I don't know what got us here, but if, if it wasn't like we could have been taking smaller steps to improve upon the existing buildings, buildings in the meantime, rather than having to do such a major overhaul. I just think that's, that's concerning. I know weird use of, um, our money and as always, look at the other budgets. The police budget particularly, is there money we can, is there a way we can, um, minimize other budgets and reallocate funds? Uh, as long as that civic campus, I think is useful to all, then, uh, I think I would be more in support.
Thank you, Andrea. And the same question to you, Paul.
Okay, um, yeah, let me, let me just give a slight bit of background here. Um, the city. Pretty much ignored facilities for many, many years. We weren't updating things. We weren't. Um, creating reserves to pay for upgrades when we needed them. And I will say the civic campus is part of a much larger facilities discussion. Council has, has approved and the city has either finished or is nearly finished upgrading. Two fire stations that were badly out of date. Um, I think we agreed in principle as a council to, um. Fund a new parks and rec maintenance facility. If you want to know why that matters, drive down to Avery Park. Past the Parks and Rec Office and look to your right, you'll be appalled at what's there. But now we're at, we're, we're starting into the difficult decisions and the expensive decisions. We need a new fire station in South Town. We need a new police facility. We need a new city hall or, or what would morph into a civic campus. You know, the reality is we do need a new city hall. The, the one we have is old. It's not seismically sound. HVAC is lousy, layouts inefficient. It's poorly designed for ADA access. There's a lot of reasons it needs to be replaced. The, the struggle is what are the highest priorities for these new facilities? Andrea noted the cost and yeah, a police or a civic campus is in the fifty million-ish range. A police facility would be about the same, I think. Um, the question is. What does the public think we need? What are they willing to pay for? Because that's the critical bottom line here is it's going to take money. We're probably going to be borrowing money to pay for these things. Since we don't have reserves that will fund it, so. Personally, I don't believe the city, the civic campus is my individual highest priority, but. That says important in the not distant future to replace all of the three facilities I mentioned. The fire station, the police facility and city hall, so, um. How we pay for it, that's the discussion, so I'll stop there.
Thank you, Paul, and we'll end the question with you, Roy.
I have heard about this issue from many different people and. I think it's important that we spend much more time to make sure that. We are doing what is actually needed rather than just wanted, but also making sure that our staff is in a comfortable environment and. That they're not having the work conditions. And so I think that's something we need to make sure is happening. Um, not only because that's just the right thing to do, but be also because it's more efficient to have staff that's comfortable. It's a lot of money to build all of these new buildings and it's just important that we make sure that the city is what, we know what the city is, what the, what the. What our community members are willing to pay for, um, as we continue through this process. Yeah, I think I'm going to keep it short with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hand it over to Angel for our last question.
Right, um, final question, we'll start or we'll end like we started, um, Paul, you'll go first. Then Roy, then Andrea will close us out. So our final question, um, Paul, are reported incidents of racial bias and hate crimes adequately documented and addressed in our city? And would you alter or augment the process that's in place?
Okay, um, as I noted earlier, uh, the city did. Fund a position to address bias response because there was a state program in place, but it. Didn't seem like it was getting good information in a timely way. Since then, to be honest, we haven't talked about it or heard much about it as a council. Um, so I, I have to say, um. Clearly, if that's the case, then the system is not adequate. It's not well documented. It's not addressed. We don't hear it. Um, or maybe. It happens, the few meetings I've happened to miss the last few years, but I think we can do a better job. I think at a minimum, we be, need better systematic reporting, both at the local level. And to access and, and provide the state data. Enough said.
Thank you, um, and Roy, same question.
Basing in- information that I have from friends and other community members of color that. Live in our community, I don't think the city is. Having enough, I don't think there's accountability in the city. Close friends have had really bad experiences, whether they're at work or just being involved anywhere in the city, um. So I think it's important to pass things like the. Bias response initiative and make sure we're having full implementation. Of, I think it's also incredibly important for us as city councilors to make sure that we. Are taking the lead and bringing up issue, bringing up issues like this, because if we are, if we're the ones staying quiet, then. We're also part of the problem and I would like to be that, that counselor that does bring up issues like this.
Thank you, Roy, uh, and Andrea, same question, close us out.
Yeah, uh, um, I mean, I think it was problematic that I had to Google this and I didn't know if there was even a bias response, um. Protocol at the, um, city and. Uh, what Paul was describing, I saw that something was passed, but then there was no actual, like when you go to the city page and you say report a problem. Bias isn't one of those problems that you can report and I'm currently, my, I was part of OSU's developing their bias response team, um. Like six years ago, um, and sat on that task force while I worked there. Um, I also am currently. Establishing a microaggressions and acts of illusion, policy and protocol and response team from Noma County in Portland. And that is, I mean, the main thing about those, people have to know about it for it to ever work. People have to know about it and it has to be easily accessed. Um, we should be able to like, I mean, not even have to Google it, but it should be very, um, obvious to. To folks, which requires campaigning about it and making, putting out, you know, information and taking the effort to actually advertise it. But first of all, it needs to be an established program that's going to be functional and not going to just further harm people that have been harmed. Um, I think the police should not be involved in that process. I don't think they are the answer. Um, necessarily for a hate crime, that's different, but for racial bias and such as experienced in the. Community, I don't think police being involved is necessarily, um, gonna create buy-in. But yeah, this is something I would love to work on. What Roy was saying was like, this should be what. Um, the city council members should be ensuring and, um, monitoring this, this issue. Any of the initiatives that are being brought up or that we've put money towards also that, you know, what is the status of this? Where is this going? And when issues are brought to council that are based on, you know, are race-based or bias-based and take them, you know. Listen to the subject experts and, and, uh, take a clear stance against, against racism.
Thank you, Andrea and Jessica. Turn it over to you.
Great. Well, here's our very last question, which is, you have a min- minute and a half to say. To your ward seven constituents, why vote for you, you know, so if each of you could take a minute and a half to. Speak to the voters in our final few minutes here, that would be great. We're going to start with Roy and then go to Andrea and then to Paul. So Roy, please start us out.
Hi, um, I just want to thank Paul and Andrea. This has been very fun. Um, I'm happy that I got to do this. To the constituents of Ward Seven, I, I know I am very young to be running for city council. But I also think that I. Am the person that will make a good change in Corvallis. I have very strong vision for what I want to see in Corvallis, which includes everything from bike paths to improved. Public transportation so that buses don't getting stuck in traffic. As well as limiting traffic on some streets to make it so that they're more pedestrian bike friendly, um, like Monroe. Or, um, yeah, I like the work that's being done on streets like Third Street and like to see that elsewhere. And even to a more extreme, extreme extent. I think there's, there's a lot of problems that are going on in the city right now. Uh, with the houseless community, with climate change, um, and. I think we need to make sure we are preparing for climate emergencies. On a community level basis, as well as making sure that the city has, has plans and making sure that. Things like the climate action plan are actually being. Engaged with and prioritized by the city so that we actually have these fantastic plans that can actually be used. I would like the opportunity to make more of a change for Corvallis and that may not be as a city counselor. But I would really love the opportunity and I'm going to continue doing advocacy work through Sunrise and other groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy, and Andrea, on to you.
Um, well, thank you. Yeah, thank you for hosting. Thank you, Paul and Roy for this conversation. Um, I do think whatever comes our way, um, as a community and as a ward, I think. Bringing a collectivist and community-based approach, um. Is what's going to get us through. The issues that we'll have to tackle with climate change, with other, um, potential issues. Just divisiveness, et cetera, like just bringing, um, bringing more community-based engagement. That is my. Uh, favorite thing to do is just build community and work on mutual aid and do more, um. Just reminders that we're like in this together. And, you know, the passion I bring to one issue, Palestine, I hope it brings you all of them. I am very passionate about, um, advocating for justice, for social justice, for, um, for each other and so. I'm just here to be another option and I'm, I'm excited about. The slate we have in general across the, the city this year. So I'm just, I'm excited that there's so many voices and choices showing up. And I'm grateful for the work because I know it's a lot. So yeah, that's.
Thank you, Andrea, and we'll close the question with Paul.
Okay, thank you. Um, I want to again thank the NAACP and the league. I want to thank viewers. I hope this was a worthwhile. Experience for you and I want to thank Andrea and, and Roy. I think we've had a good conversation. I think there's some good issues out there and, um. I look forward to continuing these things right up until election day and beyond. When I first ran for council five years ago, I said a couple of things that I think still hold. My only goal was to effectively represent Ward Seven and the community. Um, I didn't have any higher political ambition. This is not a stepping stone. I don't have any hidden or special agendas. Um, I just want to work to represent the ward. Uh, so I hope people will look at my record when they think about how they're going to vote and. Um, several things, experience, obviously, five years on council. I, I'm. Up to speed on pretty much all the issues and know the people in the system. Uh, my fellow counselors elected me council president this year, which says they have some measure of, of trust and respect for, for me and how I work. Prior to this, in my professional life, I had a lot of experience with contentious issues and. With controversial, I mean contentious groups and controversial issues. In an extreme, I worked with a group where we had to have consensus to do anything. And so you had to work pretty hard to find common ground and that, and that's a, that's a great experience. I spent my career in science, so I make informed decisions based on data, based on facts. I have a lot of experience with highly complex issues, often at the intersection between technical and, and policy decisions. I hope I've earned your trust and would appreciate who you vote for. Please, please. Is important. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, and I will hand it back to Angel to close us out.
Yes, um, thank you, Ward Seven candidates, Paul Schaefer, Rory Rubin and Andrea Bybee. Thank you for joining us in this lively discussion and for sharing your interest in taking a seat on the Corvallis City Council. To all watching, on behalf of the Lindbin branch of the NAACP and the League of Women Voters of Corvallis, thank you for listening in. Remember to talk to your friends, neighbors and families about voting in this general election. Good evening.
Good evening.